Good evening, everybody. We'd like to call this open session to order. City Attorney Ford, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nothing to report out of closed session.
All right, thank you. Brian, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Roll call, please. Councilmember Rhodes?
Here.
Councilmember Lister?
Here.
Councilmember Judge?
Here.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Agenda review. Are there any items for agenda review? Madam Mayor, there are none. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only and all further reading be waived.
Second. Call for the vote. The motion passes unanimously? Thank you. If any member of the City Council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration on any matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare at this time. Seeing none. Thank you. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, the first item on the agenda is Item 1D1, Presentation of Certificates of Appreciation to Outgoing Special Events Support Review Committee Members, and Senior Management Analyst Heidi D'Nardo is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and members of the City Council. Tonight, we are recognizing four Special Events Support Review Committee members who donated their time to review 12 special event applications requesting $83,425 and had the difficult job of making grant funding recommendations of $25,000 to the City Council. Committee members chaired a public meeting held on December 18, 2024, and listened diligently to presentations from all nonprofit organizations present. Tonight, we would like to recognize these individuals for their generous service given to the community as a Special Events Support Review Committee member. I'd like to first take a moment to recognize Janet Plant of the Council on Aging who volunteered to serve on the five-member committee but needed to withdraw due to a family emergency. Janet's willingness to contribute her time to the city does not go unnoticed. And now, I'd like to invite the following committee members, if they are present this evening, to come on down to the podium as I call their names. Chair Michael Turpak, representing Neighborhood Council Number Two. Just let me know he would not be able to make it. Vice Chair Laura Hurd, representing Neighborhood Council Number One. David Kritzer, representing Neighborhood Council Number Three. Thank you, David. And Stephanie Bunker, representing Neighborhood Council Number Four. Thank you.
We appreciate, we appreciate everything you and the committee do. That is one of the hardest tasks, I think, that we have for the city because everyone has a good reason and what they want to do. So will we thank you for your service? And do we have pictures? Okay, since it's you and me. Congratulations and thank you again for your service. Appreciate it.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 1D2, Presentation of an Honorary Resolution to the Recipient of the Wayne Templeton Volunteer of the Year Award, and Deputy Community Services Director Anna Medina is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and members of the City Council. Tonight, the City Council is honoring the recipient of the 2024 Wayne Templeton Volunteer of the Year Award. The Wayne Templeton Volunteer of the Year Award for the City of Simi Valley is an honor given to a senior whose selfless volunteerism helps improve the lives of seniors in our community. This year, I am happy to announce that Dorothy Yannick was nominated and selected by her peers to receive this honor. Ms. Yannick, it brings me great pleasure to invite you to come forward as I read the resolution. Whereas Dorothy Yannick has been selected by the Simi Valley Council on Aging as the recipient of the 2024 Wayne Templeton Volunteer of the Year Award, following in the tradition of selfless devotion to senior issues and outstanding service to the senior citizens in our community. And whereas Dorothy Yannick has served Simi Valley seniors in numerous capacities since 2018, volunteering nearly 1,400 hours over the past three consecutive years, ensuring that the growing needs of seniors in our community are met. And whereas Dorothy Yannick has served as a committed volunteer, consistently demonstrating dedication and enthusiasm at the Rendezvous Cafe Congregate Meal Site. She reliably arrives each morning to assist with meal preparation, setting tables, wrapping cutlery, and decorating the check-in table with seasonal themes, creating a relaxing, social, and nutritious environment for our community's seniors. And whereas Dorothy Yannick has consistently supported the Council on Aging's special events such as Wellness Expo, Drama Show, Bingo Bonanza, and Weekly Friday Bingos that seniors love to attend and which help raise funds to enhance the experience and environment of the senior center. And whereas Dorothy Yannick has been a dedicated volunteer, where she has played an important role in administering the Council on Aging's "Buy One, Get One Free" monthly dial ride pass, where seniors who purchase the monthly ride pass are eligible to get a free one. And whereas Dorothy Yannick has been known for her warm and welcoming demeanor in her volunteer role. She consistently demonstrates patience, kindness, and a genuine willingness to assist seniors, ensuring they feel supported and valued. Her friendly approach fosters an environment of trust and comfort, making a meaningful impact on the seniors she helps. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Simi Valley that it commends Dorothy Yannick as the recipient of the 2024 Wayne Templeton Volunteer of the Year Award and expresses its recognition and gratitude for all that she has done and continues to do in our community, presented this 10th day of February, 2025.
Thank you, thank you so much. I thought I was busy. You outdid me on almost every whereas, so that was pretty good. Unfortunately, we don't have the correct resolution here, so we can't do. But I will make sure that when it's done, I will bring it over to you at the senior center so that we can do pictures together with the resolution. Will that work? All right. So you have done so much for our senior center and everything else. I love the "Buy One, Get One Free" on the dial ride. That's pretty good. Would you like to say a few words?
No, just thank you to everybody and be a volunteer if you can. It's a lot of fun.
That's a perfect response. Thank you again. Thank you so much. I will make sure to make arrangements.
And DeeDee, I want to share something while they're taking this picture. What I learned today at the Council on Aging is that there are over 250 volunteers at that, at the senior center. And so we're talking the creme de la creme of so many volunteers that she has received this award. So congratulations again, Dorothy. Templeton Award, wonderful.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 1D3, Presentation of Certificates of Appreciation to Outgoing Council on Aging Committee Members, and Deputy Community Services Director Anna Medina is presenting this item as well.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and members of the City Council, again. This evening, the City Council is recognizing four outgoing Council on Aging Executive Board members. Unfortunately, the outgoing members could not be with us this evening. Marie Hale. Marie Hale enthusiastically embraced her role with the COA during the past two years on the Executive Board and as Recording Secretary. She consistently provided accurate meeting minutes and vital support for fundraising efforts and hospitality during the Wellness Expos. Marie's commitment to making our events successful, meticulous attention to detail, and wonderful positive attitude and sense of humor will be missed. Carol Martin. Carol Martin made an immediate impact on the COA over the past two years, stepping into key leadership positions such as chair and vice chair. She played a significant role in organizing major events such as the Wellness Expo and Street Fair. Her involvement on the Strategic Planning Committee as a representative for the Ventura County Area Agency on Aging and as a Financial Abuse Specialist Team Liaison highlights her commitment to our organization and the fight against financial abuse within our community. Carol's passion and enthusiasm have truly inspired us all. Jeannie Mortensen. Jeannie Mortensen has been a steadfast force on the COA Executive Board for the past four years. As the treasurer for three of those years, Jeannie not only managed the COA finances, but also oversaw the transition to a new accounting software, ensuring the accuracy of the financial reporting and streamlining processes. Jeannie also actively participated on numerous committees such as the Budget Committee, Strategic Planning Committee, Community Senior Needs Assessment, Street Fair, and served as the Program Manager for the Senior Share Food Distribution Program. Jeannie's leadership and dedication have been invaluable and will be greatly missed. Janet Plant. Janet has had an enduring presence, serving three two-year terms during which she served as COA Chair and corresponding secretary. Janet served as co-chair of the Strategic Planning Committee, and her insights and suggestions have shaped the COA's vision for the future. She was instrumental in the planning and execution of the COA's 50th Anniversary Kickoff Event and the always-popular Stars and Stripes Ice Cream Social. Janet's commitment to advocating for seniors, strong leadership, and excellent wordsmithing skills have supported the COA's mission statement in amazing ways. On behalf of the City of Simi Valley and its residents, we sincerely appreciate all their service and commitment to the COA. Your contributions have left a lasting impact, and we wish you all the best in your future endeavors. Thank you.
I'm sorry, none of them could be with us tonight. Our Council on Aging and the Executive Board, they do so much for our community, so thank you to each and every one of us. Thank you, Anna.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 1D4, Presentation of a Proclamation declaring the month of February as Black History Month. And Senior Management Analyst Heidi D'Nardo will read the proclamation. And here to accept the proclamation is Officer Jay King.
I was going to call the chief down too, so thank you. Chief Short and Officer Jay King, I love it. Thank you. Perfect. Good evening again, everyone. Whereas the celebration of Black History can be traced back to 1926 when writer and scholar Dr. Carter G. Woodson, the father of Black history, began the annual observance each February to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln to recognize the contributions of Black Americans in the nation's history. And whereas, since February 1976, when President Gerald Ford proclaimed Black History Month to recognize the important and innumerable contributions made to our nation's life and culture by Black citizens, all American presidents have designated February as Black History Month and endorsed a theme. And whereas, this year's theme for Black History Month is African-Americans and Labor, which focuses on the various and profound ways that work of all kinds intersects with the collective experience of Black people and how these contributions have shaped our community and our country. And the City Council calls attention to the importance of labor movements in fighting discrimination and advocacy from equality. And whereas, Black History Month is a prompt to the citizens of Simi Valley to reflect on the sacrifices and contributions made by generations of African-Americans and continue the nation's march toward a day when every person knows the unalienable rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and to build a better and brighter future. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Simi Valley does hereby proclaim the month of February, 2025, as Black History Month in the City of Simi Valley to celebrate the rich contributions that Black Americans have made to the fabric of our society. Thank you.
I just want to thank Senior Officer King for being here and accepting this for us. We appreciate it and all the service you give us too. So thank you for all you do. I'm sure the chief has a few words.
Just thank you for recognizing Black History Month. It's our pleasure to work for the City of Simi Valley and work in Ventura County, the best county in the state. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 2, Public Statements on Appointments, Special Presentations, and Informational Reports. We have no speakers for this item this evening. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Next on the agenda is Item 3A1, Appointment of Mayor Protam, Vice Chair, President Protam, Mayor Kavanaugh and members of the City Council. At the December 16, 2024 meeting, the City Council appointed Councilmember Kavanaugh to serve as Mayor Protam as well as Vice Chair of the District Authority and President Protam of the Library Board of Trustees. Due to the untimely passing of Mayor Fred Thomas, which left the mayor position vacant, the City Council, at the meeting of January 27, 2024, appointed Mayor Protam Kavanaugh to serve as mayor. This appointment left the Mayor Protam position vacant. It is now recommended that the City Council Board of Directors, Board of Trustees, consider the appointment to the Mayor Protam Vice Chair, President Protam positions. This concludes staff presentation. Thank you. Any comments? Councilmember Rocky Rhodes?
Yes, I'd like to move that my judge be appointed as Mayor Protam.
And I will be happy to second that. In fact, that was, I think, the discussion two weeks ago that I know when there was a discussion about mayor and vice mayor. And so Protam, happy to second that for Mike.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Call for the vote, call for the vote, please. The motion passes unanimously? Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 3A2, Informational Presentation by Youth Council Member Tonvi Iju.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and members of the City Council. First and foremost, the Youth Council is deeply saddened by the passing of Mayor Fred Thomas and would like to express our heartfelt condolences. My name is Tonvi Iju, and I'm currently a senior at Simi Valley High School. I am proud to be representing the Simi Valley Youth Council to present this informational report regarding our accomplishments throughout December 2024 and January 2025. We sincerely thank you for your continued support of our program, which allows us to make a positive impact on our community. Over the past months, we've been busy with several initiatives. On December 14, the Youth Council participated in the MetroLink Holiday Train event, where we held a booth offering fun crafts such as sock snowmen and placemats, as well as handed out candy. Through these efforts, the Youth Council raised $101, which, sorry, $101.50, which will contribute to our future community projects. That same evening, we hosted the Youth Council Holiday Party and fostered our teamwork through activities like Secret Santa and Gingerbread Housemaking competitions. Looking ahead, significant process has been made in planning our annual Youth Impact Forum, previously known as the Youth Town Hall. This year, the forum will center around the theme "Turning the Tide: Preventing Substance Use in Youth." This event will consist of speakers, breakout rooms with engaging activities such as escape rooms and public service announcement creations. While the event was traditionally held at the Ronald Reagan Presidential Library, we are excited to announce a venue change for this year at the new Ronald Reagan Academy of Communication and Leadership at Sinaloa Middle School. Additionally, we are updating the event format. Rather than having an Rather than having an open registration, the Youth Council will be collaborating with advisors across Ventura County, asking them to select three to five students, student leaders per school, to participate, in hopes they will take the information back to their schools to start their own projects. The Youth Impact Forum is scheduled for February 21 and promises to be an impactful opportunity for youth voices to be heard and meaningful discussions to take place. In addition to these efforts, the Youth Council has provided presentations at four neighborhood councils regarding youth programs, strengthening our connection with the local community. We are also making efforts in fulfilling the Friday Night Live Underage Drinking Prevention Grant. As the Chair of the Teen Wellness Committee, we have been collaborating with our Social Media Committee to produce a public service announcement that will address the importance of preventing underage drinking, as well as weekly social media posts. To access these posts and support the Simi Valley Youth Council, please follow us @Simivalleyyouthcouncil on Instagram, Facebook, and YouTube, as well as SVYC2929 on TikTok. And to our esteemed City Council, we cannot thank you enough for all this tremendous support you provide us with. On behalf of the Youth Council, we are truly honored and grateful to be working with such an amazing group of people, and once again, we cannot thank you enough for your constant support. Thank you for giving me the honor to speak to you tonight. I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lister.
That was a wonderful presentation. I'm looking forward, I think all of us are looking forward to the Youth Impact Forum a week from Friday, the 21st. I'm sorry I ran out. I had to run out just so you could see this really cool book. This is a book that Tonvi wrote and illustrated and published, and you two could have a copy if you go on YouTube.
Amazon.
Amazon, I'm sorry, Amazon. On Amazon, YouTube, called The Samosa Surprise. I just want you to see what delightful, amazing youth we have on the Youth Council. And she wrote this entire book on her iPhone, if I'm not mistaken, and illustrated. Don't ask me how, you can use a phone that way. But it is literally, it's a beautiful story about culture and one of my favorite parts, okay, I know that it is dedicated to her mom. I love that. I think that is just the sweetest. So, anyway. So you two get your own copy, and maybe I'll share this with you if you want to come talk to me afterwards. So I just had to say, congrats, Tonvi.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Yes, I believe Councilwoman Lister wants you to sign the book. It's a collector's item. I thank you for the report, for the wonderful, well-written, well-delivered report. I wish all of our organizations, groups, councils that report to us would do so, like the Youth Council does. You impress us every single time. I'm looking forward to attending the new format of the event this year. I think that's kind of exciting and interesting. It is one of the most informative events for youth that I go to in any year, and I put it on the calendar early, and I encourage anyone else to make the trip, take the opportunity to see what leadership really looks like. So thank you very much for the report.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm very excited it's going to be at Sinaloa. I was able to attend the ribbon cutting for the new Leadership and Communication area, and it's fantastic. So that will be really wonderful to have the new forum, the new way they're doing it, and bringing students from other high schools and middle schools. Great program, great idea, whoever worked that one out. So we look forward to it. So appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 4, Public Statements. During this Agenda Item 4, the City Council will hear public statements for the first 10 persons who have submitted speaker cards. After the first 10 persons have spoken, subsequent persons who submitted a speaker card will be called to speak during Agenda Item 6, which is a continuation of Agenda Item 4. Agenda Items 4 and 6 are times allotted for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. Speakers will be called on in the order in which their card was submitted to speak for this public statement, Item 4, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community residence for the record. Madam Mayor, unless you have any comments, we can begin public statements.
Please go ahead.
I will call three speakers at a time, so you can stand by. Chris Turner, Mike Shaw, and Douglas Lipsky.
Good evening, City Council members and Mayor DeeDee Kavanaugh. It's good to see you again, Mayor. Thank you for speaking at our Simi Valley Leadership Class last Friday for Public Works: United We Thrive 2025. My name is Chris Turner, and I'm the Executive Director at the Simi Valley Family YMCA. And I just wanted to spend a couple minutes this evening to bring awareness to what we're doing in response to the wildfires that are hitting Southern California and our favorite subject, the power shut-offs. In 2018, during the Woolsey Fire, a few professional athletes were evacuated and wanted to do something to support their community. Someone suggested they should partner with the YMCA, since they are a nonprofit with experience and the ability to collect and distribute funds and resources. In that moment, California Strong was born. Since then, the Wise California Strong Program has provided disaster relief to those impacted by the 2018 Woolsey and Hill Fires, the Borderline Shooting, the Mountain Fire this past November, and the recent Palisades and Eaton Fires, to name a few. To date, we have redistributed almost $3 million in funds. Shortly after the Palisades and Eaton Fire, we partnered up with local businesses to provide a free shopping spree for 1,600 families. And this past weekend, we partnered with Easton and Rawlings and provided sports equipment for 400 families. I share this with you because this program is not well-known. So please, if you or any of your loved ones were impacted by the fires, please look up the California Strong Program. And lastly, I'll close with our response to the PSS events, the Public Safety Power Shut-Offs. Thankfully, the YMCA was not impacted by the recent power shut-offs, so we decided to open our doors to the community. If you needed a place to charge your phone and relax, we were there for you. If you needed to take a warm shower and maybe work off that frustration that you'd been building up about not having power, we were there for you. If you had kids and needed a place to take them for a few hours, we were there for you. And we will continue to open our doors to the public whenever there's a PSS event. Our mission at the Y is to strengthen community through healthy living, youth development, and social responsibility. It is our responsibility, we believe, to care for this community, and we will continue to do whatever the community needs from us. So thank you for your time this evening, and if there's a need in the future, please reach out to the Y.
Evening all. Mayor Kavanaugh, councilmembers. I'm here to talk about our Bicycle Master Plan again, but I don't want to start getting pigeonholed as the bicycle guy, maybe the budget guru perhaps, but I came to ask the Council to form a bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee. Simi Valley's bicycle infrastructure is made up of piecemeal, disconnected bike lanes to nowhere that do not provide a consistent, safe route and force riders to choose between unsafe and uninviting alternatives to complete their rides. The goal is to create a network of streets and off-street paths that are safe, comfortable, convenient for people of all ages and all abilities that want to bike or walk in Simi Valley. When complete, the network will make it easier, safer, and more comfortable for people to travel by bike or foot to and from home, job, school, government facilities, tourist attractions, and other places within the city. I request the Council to appoint a 10-member committee to spearhead a community engagement process on rewriting the Bicycle Master Plan. Members to be selected by the City Council members. The directive to study the Simi Valley Bicycle Plan, past and present. Focus on future bicycle plan, predicting shortfalls, estimate costs for future infrastructure improvements. Advise the Council on the most advantageous design and designation recommendations. Well, that's about it, because I don't need to say the rest of it. But I hear you guys are doing something. I'd love to hear about that. I think the whole community would love to hear about it, and if we can get greater community engagement, I'm all over that too. So thank you for listening, and I look forward to your answers.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. My name is Douglas Lipsky. I live on the west side of Simi Valley. Right now, Simi Valley is in great danger of fire. I have pictures here on Royal and Sinaloa. All the way north is dry brush. We have not cleared it in years. Ventura County is fighting with Simi Valley, whose job is to clean it up. And I'm getting tired of hearing whose job it is. I'm giving you guys these pictures to look at. So I need someone to get their act together to do something. And we need to know if the fire department has sent notices to the residents or what's going on to get clearance, because they're saying it's incorporated, it's Ventura's job, or it's Simi Valley's job. And this is just getting out of hand, because I don't want it to be like Altadena or Pacific Palisade. We do not need this. And all of Simi Valley, that's all it takes. You guys have seen, Simi Valley is just gonna turn into a big fire. We need to do something about it. I'd like to see something. And then the next thing is the freeway. Is anybody calling Caltrans to clean up our freeway? It's a total mess. I'm just trying to get answers. If I can get some in the next few weeks, that would be nice. Here's some things that they can look at. Thank you very much.
John Lapper, Edgardo Rivas Frati, and James Greenfield.
Mayor Kavanaugh, City Council. Last year, I brought it up to the Council's attention that Royal Avenue east of Corto Street is in terrible shape, and I included photos of potholes with several chunks of asphalt kicked up. The stretch on Royal hasn't even been wormed to fill in the cracks as done on other major streets. The street gutters were also overgrown with weeds. No councilperson responded to me, not even my own council representative, Rocky Rhodes. Councilman Judge has been on the City Council for 14 years now, a good 10 years plus of that when not one city budget dollar was allocated to major street repaving. After my last inquiry, I did hear from the Public Works official, who said he was a planner for such street repaving projects. He told me the Royal Avenue segment of which I spoke wasn't even on the planning radar, but that he would look into it. Fortunately, federal dollars from the Biden American Rescue Act finally provided funds for major street paving in Simi Valley. I am again asking that Royal Avenue be reevaluated for repairs, not patching, from the $4 million budget surplus you are allocating to city infrastructure. Saving these funds makes no sense while conditions remain hazardous. My condolences to all with the passing of Mayor Fred Thomas, and congratulations to Mayor Kavanaugh on being a selected mayor of Simi Valley. Soon, the City Council will be selecting a replacement for the vacated council seat in District 1. I am hopeful the Council makes a selection based on the best qualified person to make business decisions that serve our entire community, both fiscally and with inclusivity. It is well-known our nonpartisan City Council members are all Republicans. Regardless of political party affiliation, I am hopeful this Council seizes this opportunity to select a candidate that is nonpartisan, or at least nonpolitical in the community. While community service is important, I fail to understand the three-year verified charitable contribution criteria required. That is a most subjective criteria, and we are not picking a Rotary president with this appointment, although I 100% support the achievements of the Rotaries of the world. I also do not think an individual who ran for a position in the recent Simi Valley election and lost that election should be placed in the vacant seat. The public chose to defeat those individuals for a reason. And lastly, just with the YMCA, it reminded me of the 1960s, when I was a member of the Gray Y in the valley. The main mission was to teach good sportsmanship, and I remember that all my whole life. And that needs to be true with political competitions more than ever today.
Good evening, Mr. Rhodes, R. Garbetti, Mrs. Vanah, Mr. Ford, Mrs. Lester, and Mr. Judge. I was here last meeting, and I left saying, who is telling the watch commanders, in the evening mainly, that's when I always call, and the dispatchers, mostly all females and two males, that they're not going to help me with the narcotics and the drugs at River Ranch Apartments? And I need an answer for that, because as you know, Mayor, I'm going to court for this, and it seems like the rich men always get away with everything. I have a very good last name, Rivas Frati, and I'm the original ones, and I'm very glad that I am a Frati, and we're the only Fratis in the United States. Mario Frati, the actor in New York, just passed away. He was related to me, he made the news. But my main concern is, who, if it's one of you guys, one of the city members, I don't think Judge, Mike Judge is involved, or Mr. Rocky Rhodes. I just met you, and I guess your last name is Italian, but I need to know, who is giving these orders, ma'am? Mr. Rhodes, Ms. Mike Judge, above, avoiding Mr. Rivas, a two-time war veteran, active war veteran. I don't know if the Chief of Police ever been in war. I want to, I'd like to know, or Mr. Ford. I know Mr. Judge has been involved with the LAPD, that's very close to a veteran, have been in active wars. But I cannot do it alone, fighting the cartels in Simi Valley. Ms. Lester's know the problem I had at Meadowwood Apartments. This individual, Ms. DeeDee, wanted, Mr. Rhodes, they wanted $2,500 out of my pocket. That was a total of almost $5,000 a month, and they were part of the cartels, but they were not part of my culture, religion, or life. They were trying to gain money to get rich. They'd picked on the wrong guy. If I already told you my last day what it means, they're gonna have a tough battle with me, mental battle. I don't have no weapons, I'm not in the military no more, but I fight mentally, and I use the law, and I would like to challenge Mr. Ford and the Chief of Police to better the city. Because if we're not able to control the narcs- Because if we're not able to control the narcs, it's gonna turn out to be like Westlake or Carther Park. And I grew up there in the 1950s. So, I'll be here next week. Maybe you might have an answer, or I'll put it in writing. So, you could put it in writing, so I could take it to court. But we need better management and better business.
Okay, I'm sorry, your time is up.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
James Greenfield.
Good evening, mayor, city council. I wanted to share a few concerns. I had some questions a few months ago about a public works project in my neighborhood. I went online looking for contacts. No direct contacts are to be found. I sent an email to the address provided, never a response. There's a staff directory online, but it's void of any data. Why isn't there some transparency on the staff org chart and contact information for the public? Our city services and those we pay to perform them should not be shrouded in secrecy. The recent tragic loss of mayor has shed light on our local election system. Out of fiscal responsibility, as I understand, decisions were made. The skyrocketing costs of contracting out electoral process to the county is inhibiting direct democracy. Have you spoken out on this and drawn attention to the costs of un-auditable, outrageously expensive? And why does it take a month to get results from the county dominion voting systems? Silence fuels self-affirmation of a system gone awry. America has voted for change and not the status quo. We see a shakeup at the federal level. We want the same thing in our county and state. I invite each of you and encourage you to not be a rubber stamp club for status quo. Now is the time to speak up. There's never been a time not to speak up. The growth of the bureaucratic fiscal beast, that insatiable wants to devour and steal more of the people's money, people's resources, needs to be confronted on all fronts. So, why not conduct our own elections? Community involvement, self-empowerment, self-reliance, election integrity, preservation of direct democracy only comes by breaking out of the strengths and the convenience of, of status quo boxes. Your well-intentioned appointment plans are misguided, and they're wrong, along with your prerequisite qualifications. It's not an interview process. It should be a voter selection, election process. You are usurping the people, and please, correct course. A ship of reformation and restoration has sailed in this country. I invite you and then council to get on the boat. Simi Valley and every other city in this nation should not be a sanctuary city or part of a sanctuary state, rejecting and ignoring the Constitution. This should be declared. How much money is being wasted and squandered supporting these policies in our city and county? It is time to start asking these questions and demand answers. This body can help fuel a wave of restoration that our county and state desperately needs. Being part of an election integrity group countywide and spoken in here, I'm embarrassed. I feel like I've walked in the hall of shame to ask, why aren't you holding an election, even?
Please reconsider.
Madam mayor, that was the last speaker. Next item on the agenda is council comments regarding public statements.
Are there any comments? Councilmember Rhodes.
I'll take first, first crack. Chris, YMCA, thank you. That's just fantastic. I didn't, I didn't realize the connection between California Strong and the Y. I had heard the term, I had heard the organization. I didn't actually realize. So, thank you for doing that. And for PSPSs, that is awesome. And I would love to be able to get that information out to the community at large, that there's a place, just to charge your cellphones, even if you can't keep the fridge running, if you can at least get that and, and be around some people and, and commiserate. So, thank you for everything that the Y does. Appreciate it. Mr. Shaw, I'm pretty sure that that's, what you're asking for is exactly what the Bicycle Master Plan and the study does. It involves stakeholders from the community. And I'm not familiar with what the outreach is to get to you and why you haven't heard anything to be participating, but I believe that's exactly what you're asking for is already being done. So, it should generate what you've asked for. Yeah, I'm good. Thank you all for coming down that has spoken. If you have some direct concerns that you would like me to address one-on-one, because we can't get deep into it here, I'd be happy to take your calls, emails, and, and, and we can arrange that, that meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Littler.
Just a few ditto's and then just a couple more comments. Yes, Chris, thank you for your leadership with YMCA. I know you're here there. There you are, bless your heart. Love what the Y is doing and excited for the new projects that are happening there. And just appreciate what you're doing for our community. And, and it's good to know that when two-thirds of the community might be dark, the YMCA is keeping their lights on and is a place to come and gather. So, that's great to know. With regards to Mr. Shaw and the Bicycle Master Plan, actually, it's a question I have for our city manager. I know that we, there was grant funds, that they're in the process of starting that, but where are we in that process?
We actually hired a consultant. I was just going back through my emails, because I know that we had talked about the workshops and such. So, there were workshops held. There was no Citizens Advisory Committee. And citizen feedback was actually received at those workshops. And so, there is actually, there was a stakeholder advisory committee. So, those were more focused on kind of the technical aspects of the plan, as opposed to more of the community. Because like I said, we, we gathered that feedback at those workshops. The Stakeholder Advisory Committee included Simi Valley PD, Rancho Simi Recron Park District, VCTC, and Caltrans. And we had also solicited feedback from Simi Valley Unified School District and Ventura County Fire. So, we just didn't include a Citizens Advisory Committee in the scope of work. In terms of current status of where that is, I'll ask Director Fujiwaki if he has an update he could provide to us. Okay. Summer.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to see where you stand. And, and Mike, we hear you, and, and we'll discuss further. Thank you, Mr., I'll just say Douglas. I may have gotten your name, last name incorrectly. Appreciate you. We will look at the photos and certainly be mindful of brush clearance. And, and, but maybe you could reach out and be very specific about the direct location so that we can be more proactive if there's a specific area that you're concerned about. Mr. Lapper, you're corrected. It is on the conversation tonight to discuss transferring funds for road into infrastructure. We will have that discussion later. I know that all the roads are rated and inspected. It sounds like you've had conversations with a party to be, but we'll look specifically at the area you've, you've suggested. And, Miss, did I miss your name? I'm sorry, the last gentleman who spoke about usurping the will of the people and a variety of things. I, I understand your desire for organizational chart, the list, names, phone numbers, et cetera. I think that we have a pretty good access point, but I will, willing to look at that and see that you can receive the information as you desire to reach the right people within the city. It is true that we recorded a price of $1.25 million to hold a, to hold a, a district, to hold an election, which is hugely expensive. And, and, and even more, and more concerning is that it, within five years, it has not doubled, not tripled, but quadrupled. Anyway, the expense has been. And so, I know that we have had that discussion here with our city manager, and we absolutely are researching that cost, because it is not correct. Elections are here to serve the people. It shouldn't be cost prohibitive. So, we understand what you're saying. I do think the process that we're going through is going to be fair, transparent, and open. But I don't disagree that we need to have a way that we can have affordable elections and, and have that as a resource. But again, thank you for all of your many comments and appreciate your contributions.
Thank you all for coming. It takes a lot to come up and just speak your, what your concerns are, and we really appreciate it as a council and as a community members. Again, the YMCA, you guys have done a great job. Thanks, Chris, for being there and doing that. Mike, yes, I, we need to get you more involved with the bicycle, so we'll, we'll get you going on that. The fire cleanup, so Douglas, the city manager and I have looked at the pictures, and she's informed me that some of that is ours. So, we will be addressing that with our public works. Okay, well, we'll, we'll put a call into Caltrans. That's about maybe two, five calls, 10 calls? Yeah. We'll see what we can do. All right. And Mr. Lapper, I do agree with you on the Royal Avenue east of Corto. I drive that every day, and they've been doing a lot of work on it. So, I will check with Mr. Fujiwaki if there are plans at a later date to cover up all the work that has been done there. So, I'm sure it's on the radar somewhere, but maybe we can look at it a little bit closer. And again, Mr. Greenfield, thank you for your concerns, and we'll see what we can do. So, thank you, everybody, for being here this evening.
Madam mayor and members of the city council, next on the agenda is public hearings. This is a time for testimony on public hearings on the consideration of matters as presented on this agenda. That the records show that due notice was given as required by law, and an affidavit to this effect is on file in the office of the city clerk. All comments submitted by email have already been provided to the city council and will be made part of the record. However, they will not be read by the city clerk this evening. Speakers will be called in the order in which their card was submitted to speak for this public testimony, item 5, for a period of no more than five minutes each. Persons addressing the city council are requested to state their name and community residence for the record. Comments shall be limited to matters relevant to the item on the agenda and may be ruled out of order if comments are unrelated to the item. The reports of city staff relating to these matters shall be made part of the record of this meeting. If you challenge in court any of the city council decisions made here tonight, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this hearing. The time within which judicial review must be sought is governed by California Code of Civil Procedure, Section 1094.6. Item 5A, a public hearing to consider introduction of an ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter III, Rubbish Collection and Disposal to incorporate changes regarding hauling of solid and organic waste. The reading of the ordinance is as follows. Ordinance number 1362 and ordinance of the city council of the city of Simi Valley amending Title VI, Chapter III of the Simi Valley Municipal Code relating to the regulation of solid waste storage, collection, disposal, transfer, and resource recovery. And Public Works Director Ron Fujiwaki and Public Works Environmental Compliance Program Coordinator Wes Yates are here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and council members. This evening, staff is requesting that the city council introduce ordinance number 1362, amending the Simi-
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Fujiwaki. I, because it's a public hearing, I have to open up?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, the city attorney's telling me, so we, we have to follow. So, thank you. Before we begin, are there any ex parte communications to report? Okay, there aren't any. So, staff may now begin with their oral report on this matter.
Okay. So, as indicated, we're, we're requesting the city council introduce an ordinance number 1362, amending the Simi Valley Municipal Code regarding the city's solid waste and recycling requirements. In early 2022, in response to the passage of SP 1383, Chapters 6.03 was amended to enact enforcement and authority for organics waste diversion, formalize automated organic waste recycling, and update terminology. The California Department of Resources, Recycling, and Recovery, also known as CalRecycle, evaluates the jurisdiction's compliance with recycling mandates and requirements. CalRecycle recently evaluated the city's municipal code for compliance with SP 1383 and identified two necessary updates. One, incorporating a record-keeping process for self-hauling of recyclables and organic waste. And two, defining an enforcement process for unauthorized haulers. For many years, the city has allowed self-hauling of recyclables and organic waste. However, SP 1383 added additional requirements regarding self-haulers. A self-hauler is someone that may haul discarded, discarded recyclable materials, solid waste or organic waste in the course of performing the person's primary business, such as a contractor hauling waste in their own vehicle. However, a self-hauler cannot be engaged in the actual business of collection, removal, or transportation of discarded materials. For self-haulers to be compliant with SP 1383, they must identify the facilities where the waste will be hauled and delivered, maintain weight records of, of hauled organic material, and comply with organic waste diversion requirements. Ordinance 1362 updates these requirements and brings the city into state compliance regarding self-hauler approval. In addition to self-haulers, non-authorized haulers have increasingly operated in the city, frequently placing poorly maintained and unmonitored roll-off dumpsters in the public right-of-way without a city-required encroachment permit. Additionally, these non-authorized haulers do not pay a franchise fee to the city and impact the city's ability to assess and receive critical diversion credit for construction and demolition debris and green waste material, which is necessary for compliance with current statewide solid waste and recycling mandates. Unauthorized hauling reduces the city's diversion percentage when containers are not transported to the Simi Valley landfill for recycling. Staff routinely works with waste management to comply with state solid waste disposal and recycling recovery regulatory measures. Under this proposed code modification, waste management could report the locations of non-authorized roll-offs found during their routine pickup operations. The city is responsible for enforcement, and after the discovery of an unauthorized hauler, staff may post, staff will post a notice of violation in a clearly visible area of the illegal roll-off container. A notice of violation will cite the municipal code and request that the container be removed within 24 hours. If the container is not removed within the given time period, the city could contact waste management to impound the container. To retrieve the container, the unauthorized hauler must pay a fee of $900 to waste management, as established by the city's existing franchise agreement. The city may extend the deadlines stated in the notice of violation if and after a request by the owner, and the city staff finds compliance impractical because of the extenuating circumstances beyond the control of the owner of the rental entity, or rental entity. In closing, staff recommends the city council introduce ordinance 1362 to update the city municipal code regarding the city's solid waste and recycling requirements. That concludes our report. Wes and I are here for questions, as well as several representatives from waste management up in the audience if you have any direct questions for them.
Thank you, Mr. Fujiwaki. Are there any questions or staff from city council members? Councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you, Madam mayor. Help me understand diversion. Why is that important to the city? And, and how does this help us?
So, current state law states that diversion of 50% of landfill material happens. So, how we do that is with recyclables, green waste, and construction demolition debris. So, if a unauthorized hauler is collecting this construction demolition debris and bringing it outside of the city, we're not getting that diversion credit from our landfill. So, it hurts our overall percentage.
What happens if we don't make that diversion percentage?
We would be in violation of state laws, so we could be subject to penalties.
How big is this problem? How many, and just specifically talking about roll-off bins, how, how often does that occur in our city, do you think?
It seems, from the ones that have been sent to me, about 10 instances a week or so. You know, waste management has their eyes on that. They could say it better than I could, but it seems to be an ever-increasing problem ever since COVID. The enforcement process that we had then kind of ceased there, and then now these haulers are moving into the city.
So 40 a month of these bins would have, I would think, a substantial impact on our diversion percentage?
They potentially could, yes, depending on what's being hauled.
On what's being hauled. The tree guy who goes and trims the trees and chips it into his own truck and takes it away, that's not what we're talking about?
Correct. No, so they would be a self-hauler.
Self-hauler. And that's okay?
Yes.
All right. In terms of the enforcement of this, we get a report, and probably the simplest way to get a report is the drivers that are out there already think they'll be conscious of the fact it's not a WM bin and report it. And we go, then what's our next step?
So a city staff member would go and ensure the location of the roll-off and then post a notice of violation on it, as well as make every attempt to reach out to whoever may be utilizing it, just so that they don't go out one day and all of a sudden it's gone.
Okay. And the further enforcement, then, is our contracted hauler would impound the bin, and then it would be between the party, the contractor, and our hauler to collect that fee in order to get it out? Or does the fee end up coming to the city? How does that penalty work?
So they would, whoever owns the roll-off would have to pay waste management that fee, and waste management would keep that fee.
Okay, and that is based on our contract? It's already in place with them?
Correct, yes. So it's in the rate in the franchise agreement.
Okay. That's all my questions for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Littler?
Thank you. I want to go on the record that these two gentlemen spoke with me for at least 30 minutes or more today, as I had lots of questions, as did our city manager, because I really struggle with monopoly and having only one person be responsible. So I'm just being very clear to make that upfront. Let me, and we'll get to all that. Let me understand the question, your response to Rocky with regards to diversion. What's important is that we, is that there's a record that this is being recycled. So whether it goes to WM landfill or whether it goes to whatever else landfill, if we had a record of that, would that, would we still be receiving credit for it? Does it have to only go to Simi Valley's landfill for us to receive diversion credit?
We may, if we get accurate records, be able to claim it, although that would be more interesting in our reporting, because that's kind of done automatically between the landfill and the state. So there'd have to be an adjustment after the fact. But I believe that credit would go to the other jurisdiction it's ultimately being transported to.
So what about, then, waste that's coming in from outside of our area? Do we get credit for their diversion? Because, for instance, Chiquita landfill is closed, and we know that they're trying to bring lots of their stuff from LA into us. So I would assume, then, we are getting credit for all that diversion. Is that, am I wrong?
So, yeah, you have your weight that's being disposed of in the landfill and the weight that's being diverted, so we do get credit for that.
Okay. And has there been, so far, concern on the state, levels and percentages that we need to be alarmed in terms of those state? I realize, I didn't ask, we didn't have this discussion earlier today, did we? I'm sorry. But is there a reason right now to be alarmed that we're not meeting our percentages?
We are very close. Last I looked, we were slightly below the 50% that's necessary.
Okay. So let me, so if I understand what's being off, what's being proposed in this ordinance is, one includes that we basically have to help, the two things we're asked to do, one of which is to have self-haulers be more accurate in their reporting, is that correct?
Yes.
So what does that look like? Do they, I mean, do they weekly send a report to the city? Do they text? I'm being facetious. How do we get that report? How do we know that self-haulers are now being more mindful of recording the weight and where it's being disposed of? Where and how do we get those records?
So that, we have a pretty good idea of the self-haulers right now from the waivers they've already applied for. We didn't have this in our municipal code that they need to provide this information. So after this goes through, we would then be contacting them to ensure that they give us the disposal facilities, what's happening with material and the weights. And so they'd have to provide the documentation.
So someone from the city would be reaching out for monthly documentation, weekly, annual? Do we have a sense of that?
So, no, most likely annual is what we'd be asking for, for our annual reporting.
Interesting, okay. And so, one of our conversations earlier today, and I guess I didn't realize, and I want to, some of the contract that was signed, I didn't realize the exclusivity, I guess. I knew it absolutely applied to picking up trash on our streets, et cetera. I don't think I knew it completely applied to any, in fact, as I read the contract, and I, because I, thank you for helping providing that, the contract with WM says that city grants a contractor an exclusive franchise to perform solid waste hauling services in city, including specifically the exclusive right to collect, transfer, transport, recycle, process, and dispose of all solid waste generated at any premises in the city. So I don't think, to be very honest, when this was signed, that I understood that it was that inclusive. I've lived elsewhere, and I gave this example earlier. When I was trimming some trees or trimming, doing a big trash clean-out, I called several different haulers. I got who was going to be doing it first, what was the best price, what was, et cetera. So there was definitely competition. What I'm hearing now is there, we have signed a way that there will be zero competition. So we have this contract, and I think had I known this, I might have been a little harder on you guys two years ago, just saying right now. But my question, then, becomes, what, basically, our enforcement now is that the WM's vehicles would report, so they become the reporting mechanism, correct?
So part of it, as well as city staff?
Okay, so city staff or WM, the reporting mechanism, once you go out there and say you're in violation and you've got to move, how much time exactly do we give them to rectify the problem? I think you would share that it might be 24 hours, which doesn't seem like adequate time.
Correct, it's 24 hours.
It is 24 hours. Is that, was that in the, is that in the contract that I missed that, too? Or is that, is that in this ordinance that we are looking at?
It's in the ordinance, and we wouldn't probably immediately, you know, down to the minute, 24 hours, we would attempt to work with the resident or the person involved that has an illegal dumpster out on the street. You know, we're not, we're not here to haul away their dumpster, anything like that. We just, if it's an illegal dumpster, we would just like them to take it away as soon as possible.
And help me understand, does it make any difference if we're talking about a dumpster, a bin that has been placed on the street like a car, or if it's been placed in their driveway? Makes no difference in terms of contractual liability or the, am I correct? We're not talking any difference?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. And maybe this is a question for WM in a moment. What is the cost? And I can see what the penalties are, and I was really, I appreciate, I was looking now at the price structure, I'm thinking, okay, if we've granted them a monopoly, have we made sure that we're looking out for the best financial interest of our citizens? And so I wanted to understand what's going to cost. And so you're going to help me maybe interpret what it says, but, and actually, maybe I don't want to misstate what I'm reading here, other than it says roll-off haul rate $221, but I'd like to, maybe I could get a sense of what, then, we are contractually residents would expect when things are hauled. And I guess that's not anything we said that's in this contract, is that correct? Am I right? Maybe, I guess, I'm sorry. We'll get to them in a moment, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. Actually, this is it for questions for right now, but I just am trying to understand better what we are setting up, so thank you.
Okay, I just have one or two small questions. My concern was for the independent hauler that, when I clean out my garage, I call him to take all my junk. That doesn't affect that particular person, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That was the biggest concern that I had. This is more towards the roll-off bins, no matter the size? Okay, because I don't know that, in regards to Councilmember Littler, financially, I don't need that big, huge one to clean out my garage.
Well, and I've used a small bin. Now I know that I need to call someone with a truck, not someone with a small-
No, there are businesses. I just didn't want to put anybody out of the local haulers and the metal guy that picks up your metal on Sundays. So unless waste, unless waste management wants the metal, we can ask them. But, okay, I just want to clarify that, that it doesn't affect those little independent haulers. Will they have to log their, what they're taking to the landfill? Or are they completely?
So that's strictly dealing with green waste.
Okay.
So those, like we say, the large landscape companies, tree companies, things like that, they're allowed to haul that waste away to the landfill, but that's where the state has these regulations regarding how that green waste is being processed.
Okay. But they also have the take-my-junk guy? That it's not green waste? Or is, so that's who I'm questioning about?
So, yeah, that wouldn't be a part of this.
And they, they're not required to keep a log on an annual basis?
Standard junk hauling, no.
Perfect, okay, thank you. Councilmember Rhodes?
Yeah. I'm looking at this ordinance as being, for those who are uneducated and going out and getting a bin, as being a huge surprise when that sticker shows up and says, move it or lose it. And that, so I'm looking to hear what our education process is, and I want to start that by sharing a story. I redid my driveway and called around, got the cheapest bin, put it on the street. A friend from WM told me, I just wanted you to know, we saw it. We didn't say anything, but you're not allowed to do that. And I had no idea that that was something that was not allowed, and had I known, of course, I would have made a different choice. What are we going to do to educate and promote in order to let our citizens know that they have this one pathway for getting their roll-off bins?
We will have to work, we will be working with waste management on an outreach program. You know, we can post information on the city's website. We would ask waste management to post information on their website. Perhaps we can coordinate flyers that actually, when they see one, perhaps they can, you know, knock on the door and issue the flyer to the person before we give a notice of violation. But like some of the other regulations that have gone into effect, this is going to be a, initially, an educational process, so that people understand and know that we have the one hauler in town that is allowed to, or is the one that you get your roll-offs from.
And I'm going to posit that the people that supply these bins, once they know that it's going to be enforced in Simi Valley, that they might stop renting bins to Simi Valley, or at least letting their people know, do it fast, you're going to get caught.
Yeah, we would anticipate that, you know. Word of mouth will spread, and that'll hopefully-
I would say the education to the people who supply bins is probably a cheaper, more effective targeted rifle-shot way of getting the information out, knowing you need to tell people that you can do it at your own risk.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Traditionally, a hauler that does have these kind of bins also knows the fact that a city like Simi Valley has a contract with waste management, am I correct?
I'm sorry, they have a-
Place, one of these places that's going to dump off the bins that's not from waste management, they know the waste management has a waste contract with our city, correct?
I believe so, because-
Most other cities that have waste management contracts, like with, say, Athens, has the same kind of rules, right?
Yes, they do. We checked with those-
What we're trying to prevent here with this ordinance is to make sure the people that are using dumpsters in our city, that the stuff going into those dumpsters is going to the proper location, number one, that is accounted for, number two. Because sometimes with these bins, and this comes from my law enforcement experience, you'll have somebody come by, a fly-by-night dumpster guy, and he'll drop off a dumpster in your yard. You'll fill it with all your yard crap, all your stuff from your garage, all your, everything you can throw away, you could possibly throw away, and then he's going to find a very dark night on Tappo Canyon at the end and dump it off. Isn't that correct?
That-
Yes.
Can happen, yes.
That is mostly what this ordinance is for, is to make sure that the garbage is dumped properly and is accounted for properly. Thanks.
Any other questions? At this time, I would like to open the hearing for anyone in the City Council chambers wishing to be heard on this matter.
Madam Mayor, we do have one speaker, James Greenfield.
Thank you.
I've heard on a number of points here. So you've got, you have a contract, and you have SP 1383 compliance issues. SP 1383, I'm somewhat knowledgeable on it, not completely, dealing the trash business, and it's a unmanageable beast that's really unenforceable on many aspects, and it's kind of falling apart at the state level. And so there's that. So then you have a contract, and I think you entered into a contract that I don't think you assumed that they had a monopoly on every bin and every, basically, you took out a contract, as a homeowner, you're picking up my garbage, but now there's this monopoly, and now they want to be the police and enforce it. And I don't think that that should even be a thought, that waste management's now the police in town on all containers, all things trash. I think it's overreaching, and it's encroaching on our freedom, and I think you should consider amending the contract. My question is, are they not making enough money in the city as it is? And they're using SP 1383 to make everything that they can. And I understand that, but I think that this is, and I think there's so much to learn on this, and I think it's going to be really hard to wrap it up in a meeting or two. So I think it's a huge issue. I think you should reject this. I think we should reject overreach from the state and overreach from business and, while they're a partner, I send them about 800 to 1,000 tons of trash at their landfills a day, they're doing just fine, and we just need, we need freedom in this city. So I hope you consider that.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that was the only speaker?
Thank you very much. Does staff desire to respond to any comments or issues raised?
Not, no.
Thank you. This hearing is now closed.
Don't we have, doesn't, don't we have an opportunity for waste management to respond to some of the questions before the hearing closes? I realize it's not- That would be part of staff if they want to speak. Does waste management want to speak to any of this discussion? I'm sorry. I just want to be sure if they want to say something, that we have, I know, it's not in the script, I read it online, too.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council staff. Thank you for having us this evening. There's a lot of great information that was provided with the staff in the report. You know, 1383 is something that is on the radar for all cities, and we have to ensure that we have the proper diversion that is going. And one way that you do that is working with your haulers. We have, as I stated with staff earlier, the information that goes from landfill goes to the state, and there are fines that are subject for not meeting diversion within the city that you operate in. As stated earlier, it is not uncommon as a franchise hauler with the exclusivity to have the roll-off. We've had the exclusivity since the 90s here in Simi Valley, but you heard since COVID, there were some things that were lacked, that we're not going out and meeting with those customers. One thing with having this exclusivity with the city, and we're subject to franchise fees, we're subject to higher insurance standards, a lot of costs that are bared to a company. So, again, this is an educational thing. We're not going out and trying to, you know, penalize everyone off the bat. This is a partnership that's continued with the city since the 90s and will be, and there's a lot of things we've been working with staff on, when they get a permit, if they're doing any kind of construction, any kind of information, that the residents of Simi Valley are notified about this, that we're not just going to go out and put in enforcement down. We are not a policing agency. It's one of those that we're doing the right thing within the city and just asking for the city's support to memorialize something that has been done since the 90s, and that is something that is not uncommon in a lot of your surrounding cities. So that is my statement tonight. Thank you all for the consideration.
Can we ask- Councilmember Littler, do you have a question?
I do have a question. Justin, can we just ask a question? I'm sorry, I just want to, I apologize to, I, I'm trying to understand, and I realize that maybe because I, before moving to Simi Valley, I've lived in the San Fernando Valley, and I don't know if, obviously, they have exclusive trash deliveries areas as well, and I, and so I'm trying to understand exclusively, as you've stated since the 90s, is that, so is that standard in all these other areas where they have one hauler? Is it likely that all these other trash receptacle places or that bin are doing so illegally? Is that, is that?
I can't speak to what other people are doing in their cities illegally, Councilmember Littler, but I can tell you that it's a very common practice on contracts that are exclusive, as it states in that agreement that's set forth for both parties. I can tell you, neighboring cities of City of Moore Park, they have a 24-hour period, and I can tell you, we can count on a handful of actually bins that have been impounded, because, once again, we work with the customers. We don't go out there and use this as a arm to penalize or capture revenue based on, you know, bad behavior. But to the point, to, you know, to the definition- But to the point, to, you know, to the definition of an exclusive agreement, yes, that would be your exclusive haulers for all those reasons I pointed out. Diversion credits to make sure you're meeting that. Also, you know, with being a exclusive hauler, we have a lot of fees that are set forth to us to be compliant to this agreement that is set forth with the city.
And I appreciate, and I was aware that Moore Park has something similar. Is this, I'm just curious, and this may be a question for you. For instance, Athens and Thousand Oaks, do they have an exclusive agreement as well? Is that...
Athens and Thousand Oaks, yes.
Got it.
And also, we discovered that E.J. Harrison in Camarillo also has exclusive rights.
Okay. I appreciate, I appreciate this education. For the sake of me helping me understand the charts, so if someone requests a bin, can you give me a ballpark? I guess, I know it depends on size, length of, I just want to...
So it's rough, we're gonna do real cup, off-the-cup math.
I get it.
But, you know, you have the difference of delivery, where we have, you know, we have to go out and get the container. We have to then dispose of any waste that may have been in that container, as we can't leave it full. And then, you know, you have the operation of your man-hours that take place on there. So it really comes down to also storing the container, getting it done, all operational costs. But, you know, set forth in here, the city roll-off, 221 for just the drop-off of the container within Simi, plus the disposal charges that are set forth. Once again, all these charges are set forth by the County of Ventura, as we're an operator of the Simi Valley landfill. But your gate rate and those charges are set forth by the county.
Okay. So, okay, I will want to understand this better in the future, but I appreciate that information, and thank you for your education.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. You're not done yet. Councilmember Rhodes?
Mine's for staff.
Okay, you're done then. Thank you.
Mr. Greenfield, I have appreciated your libertarian and California, the Sacramento is overreach on us, and that's true, all of that is true. But my question for staff is, would it be wise for us to ignore the state and their mandate to change our ordinance to come into compliance?
I would say no.
By the way, that's the right answer.
That was a leading question.
It is the job of the electeds and us to reach to Sacramento and say, "This is stupid, change it." But it's not for us at this moment on the dais to say we're going to ignore it. And so you're right, and at the same time, we have a job to do. And we need to, we need to continue the progress forward in order to get to the point where we can then go and fight the appropriate fight at the appropriate place.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, this hearing is now closed. Are there further comments or questions from the City Council members? I'm following my script. I will now entertain a motion. Councilmember Judge, or Mayor Protem Judge?
I move to introduce first reading of ordinance, it's a first reading, right? First reading of ordinance number 1362, modifying chapter 6.03 of the Simi Valley Municipal Code.
Second.
Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Lister? The motion passes unanimously. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 7, the Consent Calendar, and there are no resolutions for your consideration this evening.
I'd like to move this consent calendar.
Call for the vote, please.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 9A, to receive and file the Samaritan Center's COVID-19 Community Recovery Grant Annual Performance Report, and consider request to roll over unspent Year Two grant funds to Year Three grant funding. And Senior Management Analyst Heidi DiNardo is presenting this item.
Good evening again. As you know, in September of 2022, City Council awarded a COVID-19 Community Recovery Grant in the amount of $475,000 to the Samaritan Center over the course of three years. Per the requirements of the multi-year agreement, the Samaritan Center has submitted their annual performance report for Year Two, which highlights notable achievements and expenditure activities from October 2023 through September 2024. In the report, the Samaritan Center provides detailed information on the case management and support services provided during the second year of grant funding, which included assisting clients with rental support, travel vouchers, bus tickets, gas cards, car repairs, and emergency shelter, among other vital support. The Samaritan Center also bought essential kitchen and pantry supplies, as the drive-through pantry was revamped into a walk-up pantry, offering a more dignified shopping experience for their clients. Of note, 5,908 meals were served to unhoused clients, and 4,823 household members received pantry supplies just in quarter four of the second year. Switching to the expenditure side of the report, the Samaritan Center provided a comprehensive report of finances detailing the $175,797.61 in expenditures. With a Year Two budget of $199,708, the Samaritan Center had an unspent amount of $23,910.39, which they would like to roll forward to Year Three. The unexpended advanced funds are earmarked to use for case management and housing assistance. Staff is requesting that the council receive and file this report and approve the Samaritan Center's request to roll forward $23,910.39 for Year Three of the contract, which expires on December 31 of this year. This concludes staff's presentation this evening, and I, along with Annie and Doug of the Samaritan Center, are available for questions.
Councilmember Lister?
Actually, I was just going to say we are so appreciative of the Samaritan Center and all their efforts, and I'm certainly willing to make a motion that we file this report and that we approve the rollover of unspent funds, but I don't want to preclude conversation.
Second.
Call for the vote, please.
Was that an official enough vote?
Motion passes unanimously.
I think everyone agrees. I'm just making sure. The attorney said that was a legitimate motion. Thank you, Samaritan Center. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 9B, Consideration of Distribution of the Fiscal Year 2022-23 Budget Surplus Funds in accordance with the Fund Balance Policy and Administrative Services Director Carolyn Johnson is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and Councilmembers. Before you is the annual distribution of budget surplus funds from prior fiscal years. Fiscal year 2223 ended with a surplus of $9.5 million. Through the fiscal year 2425 budget process, these funds were distributed proportionally into three funds per the fund balance policy that was approved by City Council in April of '22. The policy states that surplus funds are distributed by placing 40% into the Retirement Investment Fund, 40% into the Infrastructure Investment Fund, and 20% into the Contingency Fund. The contingency fund was given a fund balance cap of $2 million. Since there was already a balance in that fund, only $400,000 was transferred into that fund this year, and the remainder of that, what would have been available, was split between the other two funds. So $4,571,705 was transferred into both the Retirement Investment Fund and the Infrastructure Investment Fund. With the above-mentioned funding and interest earned in the fund, staff is recommending making a one-time additional discretionary payment toward the city's CalPERS unfunded accrued liability of $4,608,605 from the Retirement Investment Fund. Staff is also recommending transferring $4,605, sorry, $4,605,504 from the Infrastructure Investment Fund into the Streets Fund for the major streets projects. That includes what was transferred in during the budget process and any accrued interest that was in that fund. At this time, staff is not requesting any additional expenditures from the contingency fund. In August 19 of '24, council authorized an expenditure of $380,990 from the contingency fund for body-worn cameras for the police department. And on September 23 of 2024, City Council authorized an expenditure of $267,000 from the contingency fund to subsidize the senior nutrition program. So there's currently $1.3 million remaining in that fund and available for future consideration.
Thank you.
Any final questions?
Any questions, concerns? Excuse me, Council, or Mayor Protem Judge?
I just got a question. You mentioned Meals on Wheels. Are we gonna have to support that program again this year?
We'll be coming back with an item at one of the next two meetings for a discussion.
Any other questions? Councilmember Lister?
Thank you. I'm trying to understand, I mean, I understand what we agreed to the 40% for to retire our pension obligations, 40% for infrastructure, 20% for contingency funds if we meet these three criteria, basic, well, the criteria. So, and help me understand right now, basically, what we are allocating is, well, it will take us back to $2 million, is that, is that correct? Or where does that leave our contingency fund?
The contingency fund? Yes, during the budget, during the fiscal year 2425 budget process, we put $400,000 into that fund, which brought it back up to the $2 million.
Okay. What happens? This would be a lovely problem to have. I don't know that it has happened. But what happens if we have a surplus again? I know that a lot of the surplus had to do with, besides excellent budgeting, had a lot to do with COVID recovery funds, et cetera, et cetera. Let's say we have, in the future, a budget surplus, and we allocate the 40% here, 40% there, and we, our contingency fund is already maxed out. What happens to that 20%?
It gets distributed evenly between the other two funds. So they wouldn't end up getting more than 40%.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's clarified. Help me understand, in the report, let me go to the staff report, a little bit, I'm just trying to understand the Infrastructure Investment Fund itself and just some of our budgeting that we've done. In the report, it states that in '22, '23, we had 7.9 allocated through the budget process towards street, major street, and then we allocated more, which was lovely. But then in '24, '25, we've only allocated 1.65 towards major streets. I'm trying to understand the disparity between the amounts, and I guess, are we dependent upon, in this instance, did we budget with the, and knowing that we might have the surplus, did we then budget accordingly in your estimation?
I believe we budgeted what we had available. So I think we would have budgeted the 1.6 regardless of whether we had had a surplus or not.
Okay, so you don't think that 1.6 had anything to do with knowing that we might have the surplus?
No, I think we knew that we probably would have a surplus, but that was all that we had available.
Okay.
Any other questions, concerns? Of a motion? Thank you. Mayor Protem Judge, do you have a second? Thank you, Councilmember Rhodes. Call for the vote? I'm sorry, what?
Save my voice.
Okay. He was gonna read it for you, but...
The motion passes unanimously. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 10A, City Council Member Reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Rhodes, would you like to go first?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Wednesday, January 29, I attended the Stroptimus Human Trafficking Event called "The Apathy Effect." Has had pictures and artifacts of trafficking from around the world. Incredibly powerful event. It was poignant, it was important, and it turns your stomach to know that this is something that we have to know about and deal with, and yet we do. And so thank you to Stroptimus for putting that together. And thank you for RPD and investigative units that are participating within the county and inter-jurisdictional efforts to reduce trafficking in Ventura County and Simi Valley. On Thursday, January 30, I attended the grand opening, the official grand opening of Cork and Batter Roadhouse. If you have not gone, you should. It is, it looks fantastic inside, and Chef Jimmy is killing it with the food. So I encourage you all to visit. Also that night, I went to the Chamber's Salute to Excellence, and I wanted to give a shout-out to the awardees from the Chamber's, for the nonprofit of the year was the Samaritan Center, congratulations. Volunteer of the Year was Joseph Metcalf. Businessperson of the Year, Jose Martinez. The Business of the Year, the Acorn, and Emergency, Emergent Leader of the Year, Rochelle Binns. So congratulations to all the awardees. On Monday, February 3, I got to go back to the roots of my volunteering within the city structure of Simi Valley. Ryan Fowler invited me to participate in the Youth Employment Services Presentation to Royal High School, and I got to go and present, which was really fun to do, and it's a valuable service that our Youth Employment Services gives to these students on helping them learn how to prepare for an interview, look for a job, and then what to do when you actually get that job. So Ryan, excellent work on getting that program going. On Tuesday, February 4, I attended, out here in the, in the, what is that area called?
Civic Center Courtyard.
Civic Center Courtyard. The Mobile Library Van Ribbon Cutting Ceremony. And if you have not seen our mobile library, we are now able to take books to the people who can't get to the library, and I'm super proud of them. Well-done library. On Wednesday, February 5, I have sort of a standing meeting with the financial people at the Clean Power Alliance. Anytime that there is a vote on a redacted contract that they want me to participate in at the monthly meeting, we go one-on-one and look behind all the redacted parts, because a good board member should. And so I had that meeting on Wednesday. Then on Thursday, I actually attended that Clean Power Alliance meeting. And, do we have that slide? At that Clean Power Alliance meeting, there was a lot of discussion about rates, and I wanted the people of Simi Valley to know and understand the differences between, the Clean Power Alliance generation rates and our delivery charges, and what our decision was in terms of going with Clean Power Alliance. This is kind of fun, it's like a nightclub. So if you, now that you can clearly see the screen, the orangish line on top is the actual delivery cost, because regardless of where we buy our energy, it has to be delivered by Edison. And as you can see, the delivery costs are going up. So when you look at your bill and you go, "Why is my bill going up?", it's that line. The other lines, the dotted green, the dotted green line is basically what we are paying through Clean Power Alliance for our energy. There was a four-month period of which we actually went upside down. We're paying about a percent or two, and it actually went up to seven in January, a percent higher than Edison. Those are very short-lived period of time. In March, it gets back to parity, and in June, we should be back saving money In March, it gets back to parity and in June, we should be back saving money for those that are in the lean program. And so if you see some variability in your bills, the generation rate is the smaller part that's vacillating back and forth, the large increase is in the delivery which comes through Edison. So I wanted to share that slide so, so you can take your anger and direct it to the appropriate entity. Also on Thursday, February 6th, I attended Southern California Association of Governments, SCAG. We had a joint committee meeting, the, with the wildfires that had happened, the effort was to have the meeting, all of our different policy meetings meet together and we changed the agenda to how do we, basically, how do we get government out of the way so that rebuilding can happen quickly? And there was a panel of several people, I think maybe the most famous, at least in my mind, Dr. Lucy Jones, who remember every time there's an earthquake, you would turn on the TV and Lucy Jones is explaining what's going on with the seismometer and, and so she was there. She actually works now not just on earthquakes, but natural disasters and the recovery thereof. Amy Bodek, Steve Soboroff, and a couple others were there to talk about rebuilding. The encouraging part, the takeaway part of that is you had basically 100 civic leaders in the room, all with the same helmet on going, how are we going to help rebuilding go faster? How are we going to get government and, and rules out of the way in order to make it happen? So I was encouraged by that and yet it's going to be a massive lift to get Altadena and Palisades back where they should be. On Friday, February 7th, once again, I got to go to the youth employment and I went to Simi High. I went to Simi High only one period, six period, because my niece is a sophomore at Simi High and I needed to embarrass her. So Brooke, I'm doing it again on the dais. So, and then today, I had two meetings with staff regarding agenda items. And I also went to the swearing in of now Commander Brian Samples and congratulations, Commander. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Littler?
Thank you, Mayor. So we went to some similar things, but I'll share some of my, my, my thoughts from them as well. On Tuesday, January 28th, I attended El Capitan Fresh Mexican Grill, celebrating their fifth anniversary, did so with Mayor Protam, Mike Judge, and, and I think what's worthy, actually I'm delighted that they have survived, that they opened up right as COVID was happening. And somehow they were able to survive and make it through and thrive, and very difficult lift, but they, I commend them for celebrating five years of longevity here in the restaurant business in Simi Valley and surviving that experience. I too attended the Seroptimus hosted Apathy Effect presentation about trafficking. It truly was very powerful. I was a little late because it was my son Tanner's birthday, but it was certainly something that I hope people have the opportunity to see. It is an open exhibit, I believe it is, was supposed to be there for, is it gone? Sorry, you missed, if you missed it, you missed it. It was very powerful, though. January 30th, also attended the Cork and Batter Grand Opening. I think all of us were there and it was, it clearly is going to be a fun, exciting place for our community and very appreciate their being here and appreciate all that the city did to help them get open. I know that there were a lot of work behind the scenes as well, so thank you very much. Congratulations to those who received the awards, salute to excellence. I felt bad to be the only council member probably not there, but I had a rehearsal that I'd committed to months previously, but I, congratulations to all the ones that you mentioned, very deserving. On January 31st, attended the East Coast Pizza Company's 15-year anniversary celebration and Neil, and, and want to congratulate him on his 15 years of success here in our community. And then that evening, I went down to UC Irvine and played with the Rodoki Orchestra, which is the only Persian orchestra that I'm aware, that is in the, in the mainland in the States and so that, that they are aware of. I am one of the five or six non-Persians in that group, but it was great music that was being performed anyway. Following week, I was gone most of the week up to Idaho to visit my parents and to spend some time with them. I returned, actually returned on Thursday, February the 6th, and fortunately had a layover as I flew from Idaho Falls to Seattle to Burbank. My layover exactly coincided with SCAG's Regional Council Policy Committee meeting where they had basically, actually not the, not the regional council, but the joint special, special policy committees, thank you, the joint policy committees. And so it was, it was very, very instructive to attend that. In fact, I wanted to share some of my takeaways. You mentioned some of the people who spoke at that. I did take copious notes as I was sitting there in the Seattle airport and here were some of the things I just wanted to share with the, with the dais and with those who are watching that Dr. Lucy Jones mentioned, for instance, that some of the figures that 12,000 families lost their homes. She gave us that statistic. But then she also shared that everyone, she, this was her warning to the entire Southern California, that everyone lives within five miles of an active fault. So I, we need to be reminded that all of us need to be very, very mindful of emergency preparedness. She also educated, say that the way it works is that FEMA leaves at six months. Contractually, that's when they are gone and so you can't count on FEMA to stick around and take care of it until everything's back. And, and they are, they have certain responsibilities that they take care of that are actually regulated that they have to do, but then HUD, HUD takes over after that and they don't have those, the same ordinance, the same, I mean, basically their regulations, they treat them different, disasters differently. So I thought, I found that instructive. Just a few more statistics, 10,000 structures were destroyed in Altadena, just to give you some sense of scale, whereas in Pacific, Palisade, that also included Vince Barton with the director for, planning director for City of LA, mentioned that within the city, they lost six churches, 10 schools, five preschools, 21 commercial buildings, six mixed-use buildings, and on and on. So we, I mean, they're just, the devastation truly is, is, is so difficult to imagine, to experience and to bounce back from. They made the statement, one of them, that all victims will experience a financial gap and that's hard to wrap your head around, but every single victim, there will be a financial gap. And, and they suggested need to try to get as much as possible, of course, from insurance companies. It was interesting, one speaker talked about everyone believes that having controlled burns might be the solution to some of our, our problems. This person opined that, yes, that seems like that would be a good solution. The problem is, is that no one wants that controlled burn to happen in their neighborhood because they're afraid of, of what might happen if it gets out of control, et cetera. And so, and, and they opined that unlikely we would get to the point of brush controlled burns. So I, I thought that was interest, that was something to be mindful of as we deal with this, with the brush clearance, et cetera. Maybe this is for Eileen Connors. Basically, the comment was, please pay attention to your emergency managers. Don't dismiss them, don't lay them off, they, they serve a purpose. And have them present frequently, tabletop discussions, et cetera. So I simply put that out there, that that was counsel to our city to have that happen. One, a couple more little comments I found interesting, that of the homes that were burned, 95% of the housing stock that was lost was pre-1990 built. So clearly we're dealing with older homes. The code that came out in 2008 was a huge improvement, so even if these homes could build to that code level, there would, there would be some great fire resiliency was, was what was shared. But anyway, it, as Councilmember Rocky Rhodes suggested, it was really a meeting of the minds, very instructive and very, very informative. A little bit more, Friday, February 7th, had an outstanding meeting with Danny, Chris, and others from the YMCA to just talk about their exciting new phase, what they're building, what they're trying to do there. And, and it was just very exciting to see what opportunities are there. And of course, it's going to take a lot of work from everyone to make it successful. But as I understand, they have gotten stamped plan approval. Chris, is that okay to say that? Is that close enough? Okay, sorry.
Their application was deemed complete, yeah.
Their application was deemed complete, which is huge. So we'll make that announcement. That is, I mean, in other words, they are on the road, we just need to be there to help them and support them. And today, Mike and I were at the Council on Aging, all-new election, they're going forward with great things. I just wanted to make one more comment as, as we are aware that we are missing a seat down there. It is my understanding that, that position for District Number One, applications, those who are interested in being considered, that, that February 12th, Wednesday is the final day, if I'm not mistaken, Madam City Clerk, is that correct? Final day to pick up, pick up packets and also turn them in, is that correct?
Correct, that is correct.
Okay, I'm just saying that out loud, so if people desire, and I know I, there's some outstanding people who would, we would love to have, who are participating in that process, but I'm just wanting to be sure everyone is aware that you still have time, but only two days. So.
Right.
So that, anyway, just wanted to share that and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Mayor Protam Judge?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Tuesday, January 28th, I too attended the El Capitan 5th Anniversary. A lot of you don't understand how difficult it is for restaurants. I mean, that restaurant, like Elaine said, opened during COVID and they were able to survive through COVID and then get hit with a 20% increase on all of their products. So restaurants have had a tough time in the last five years. So understand that when you go there and please, you know, patronize them as much as you can. Wednesday, January 29th, I had to attended the Seroptimus trafficking exhibit and it was very moving. It's a very poignant reminder in our society that this does go on, even in Ventura County. So please be aware of that and understand it. They had a great, I didn't, I don't get their link, but they had a link to something because there's a, a good webinar or something online that talks about what they were doing and it was very expressive and very informative. On Thursday, January 30th, I attended the grand opening finally of the Cork and Batter Roadhouse and I'm glad to see that it's open and like Rocky said, it looks great, food's great. Jimmy, Jimmy does a great job cooking that food and the bartenders are doing a great job at the bar. It was, and it's been, from what I understand, packed ever since, so that's great news. Later that evening, I too attended the Salute to Excellence from the Chamber of Commerce and congratulations to all the awardees. Friday, January 31st, I attended the 15th anniversary of the East Coast Pizza Company. Congratulations to them for staying open also during COVID and being here long. On Tuesday, February 4th, I didn't go to that because I was sick, as you can tell. Thursday, February 6th, I did attend the SCAG Regional Council on this and the Combined Policy Committee meeting. One thing I took away from that wasn't the, the Combined Policy Meeting was just, yes, there was a huge tragic disaster and there were a lot more questions than answers, in my opinion. I still don't think government's getting out of the way enough to make these people whole real quick, but hopefully that can change. During the Regional Council meeting, though, we did have a great presentation. This goes to our traffic engineers and our planners here in the city. In March, there's going to be a service coming online and it's, it's kind of, you know, tongue in cheek, I guess, I don't know, but it's called Crash. And what it does is it allows you to go to a certain intersection in your city, pull up every traffic accident, every traffic collision that has happened in that area or that intersection. And then you can go over to another part of the same slide and it'll give you options from a planner's point of view on how you can fix that, ranging from reconstructing the entire intersection to, you know, telling law enforcement to enforce the law more there. So it's, it was a great program from what I saw and the information that's contained in it reminded me of why you had to put all that information in those traffic reports, because they had it all in there, time of day, weather, everything. So it gives you all that information for your traffic accidents in your city. That all goes with, part and parcel with California trying to reduce, trying to improve our safety on our roads and bring down our fatalities and our injury crashes. So when that program comes online, I hope we get that and I hope our, our people here are able to make use of it because it looked like a very fascinating program to me. On February 7th, I attended the VCTC meeting in Camarillo. VCTC has plans, they don't have money, but they have plans to widen the one-on-one freeway from basically Thousand Oaks all the way out to the county line at the end of Ventura. That's going to cost a lot of money. So right now they're in the, they're in the very infantile planning stages of doing that. And, you know, of course, when you hear widening freeway, California, that's not, that's not a happy word to use, especially not in Sacramento. But for Ventura County residents, it's not a happy word because you know that's going to be a nightmare. But like I said, this is in the infantile planning stages and I'm sure that when it gets going, we will do it much better than what Santa Barbara did for the last 12 years and it's still going on. So I'm hoping we could get that done better and I will make sure that I make every effort to do, if it does go through somehow they come up with the money, that it is streamlined so it doesn't affect us that badly. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Judge. On Tuesday, January 28th, I met with our new Ventura County Animal Services Director Rodriguez, Director Rodriguez, and Deputy Director Gillespie to kind of go over what VCAST Commission does and some ideas that Director Rodriguez has. I think you're going to see a lot more, some, some really good things coming out of VCAST in, in the near future. Director Rodriguez has great ideas and has implemented them in other areas, so we know they work. So I'm looking forward to, to that. There's going to be a lot of good things coming out. I also attended the Seroptimus event, it was called the Apathy Effect. Thank you for Mayor Protam mentioning it. The program is iEmpathize. I looked it up, I, because you mentioned that, iEmpathize.org. And they have a great program, they were the ones that worked with the Seroptimus here and it was very moving and it was very informative. But you can go on their website at iEmpathize, I have to say that, empathize.org. On January 30th, I also attended the Salute to Excellence by our chamber. They always do a great job, some wonderful winners. Mission Burrito is really good to our PD, so he was one of the winners along with all the other very deserving people, I think. And then on Friday, February 7th, I attended the Leadership 2025 meeting for Public Works Day and they're a great group, I was very excited. I feel old because I was in the class of 2005, so just a few years in between, but I'm expecting great things out of them in the future. So that's it for me. Are there any, any other agenda items for future that anyone would like to? Okay, seeing none. We are going to be adjourning, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Put my microphone on, I'm sorry. I had written down all of these questions and then they were answered and I want to say thank you. Last, last time I talked about concern about waste management and, and basically Shakita, et cetera, I wanted, wanted to, and I, we've got a lovely report that basically shared sunset clauses, et cetera, et cetera. But I wondered, I know that there's a lot of conversation in the community about, I'm hearing, just about delivery from the fires and, and how we are doing our part and is it toxic, is it not? We've gotten absolute reassurance that it's not, that it's stage two fire delivery, et cetera, but I was thinking that maybe it would be appropriate for Waste Management to give us a report, a presentation that I think there might be interest on that. So I just want to throw that as a possibility, whether they want to do that, whether we want to include that for agenda item, just as an informational report, I leave that to you, but that was, I found it interesting and instructive.
We can reach out to them and see what they have available. Okay, thank you. Unfortunately, this is the sad part of our meetings, we're going to be adjourning in memory of Wolf Asher, Grace Hughes, who is a Samaritan Center Board Member, Paul Jordan, he was a Simi Valley resident, he's also a senior leader, Senior Lead Officer, the Hollywood Division for the Los Angeles Police Department, Barbara Johnson, and a personal friend, family friend of mine, Stephen Loranzo. Stephen, he came to Simi in 1965, he was the Royal Class of 78. He was in the banking and mortgage loan side and he loved to travel the USA and his parents, his mother and sisters still live here in Simi Valley, so he will be greatly missed. So on that, we will adjourn.